Attention please. Mr. Mitchell. Notice of public hearing, please take notice that county legislature should hold public hearing on proposed county of Oswego Local Law Number Two of 2019 entitled "A Local Law Increasing the Term of Office for County Legislators From a Two-Year Term of Office to a Four-Year Term of Office." Twenty-Fifth day, July 2019, seven o'clock in the evening of said day at Oswego County Legislative Chambers, County Office Building, 46 East Sprig Street, Oswego, New York. The hearing is regarding extending term of office for county legislators from two-year term of office to a four-year term of office. Capes of the proposed local law are available in Clerk of Legislature's office at 46 East Sprig Street, Oswego, New York, and available online at oswego.com. Request can also be emailed to chrisjones@oswegacounty.com. I order the county legislature, July 11, 2019, Chris Paret Jones, Clerk. This local law is subject to mandatory referendum if adopted tonight at the general election in 2019. Any persons wishing to step forward and wishing to speak on proposed Local Law Number Two of 2019, please step forward and state your name.
Thank you. Well, I will go in order, and I apologize ahead of time for pronunciation, but is it Ranjit Di?
DeGue.
DeGue?
Ranjit DeGue.
Okay, well, welcome. You can come forward, you can speak right up here at the podium.
Okay.
Again, Chris, we have that.
Okay, good evening. Yeah, this bill was brought to my attention, and I was kind of surprised by this. I've heard of a lot of people recommend term limits, sometimes with a longer term, but then the term expires. This just seems like an incumbent protection act, regardless of the party of the incumbent. It just doesn't seem like a good idea. What's really good about a two-year term, just like we have in the U.S. House of Representatives, is accountability. If people don't like what Congress is doing or what the party or the president of that Congress is doing, they can vote a lot of them out really quickly. We've seen that, you know, as recently as just last year and, you know, 2014. It's a very effective tool. You can write your legislators, you can phone them, you can hound them, but there's nothing that sends a message quite like voting them out of office or the possibility of doing that. And I think this act takes that away from us, or at least takes that away from us half the time. Please.
Thank you. Next one is a equal opportunity named Butcherer. Kathleen Mantaro. Thank you. The podium is yours, and once you get to the podium, would you also state your name again?
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Mantaro. I reside in the town of Minato, where I've lived and paid taxes for the last 50 years. I've also been a teacher of history and the social sciences since 1965, and I'm currently on the faculty of SUNY Oswego. Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. I understand our purpose here tonight is to provide the legislature with their input on how the decision made by your vote tonight will affect the ballot in November of this year. I consider myself to be an informed voter. I wish I could say the same about the thousands of registered and unregistered voters in our county. Sadly, the statistics do not bear that out. One has only to look at the most recent primary vote statistics furnished by the Board of Elections. This is my first point. Voter apathy and lack of participation will probably not provide you at all with an accurate picture of the issue in November. As someone engaged in currently getting the vote out, I certainly can attest to this. Point two, if I choose to run for an office, it is my responsibility to steep myself in the process of education prior to making the decision to run. If not, my answer to myself about running should be, I am not fully prepared at this point, and I need to spend more time in preparation, perhaps spending some time visiting all of the opportunities that this legislature affords people in the county to learn about the process which you folks go through on our behalf. Point three, does the county need to save money? I spoke to my own legislator, who's sitting over there in the front row, Marie Shad, about the statistics that you put forth and about the issues that are involved in the process of paying for all the things that the legislature has to come up with money for and yet maintaining, you know, a relatively low tax for the burden of the taxpayer. We're all painfully aware of that. However, the voters and taxpayers need the right information put out there for us in transparency by our legislature in a bipartisan manner that demonstrates one voice on the part of this group that comes from the conclusion of necessity through civil discourse, taking into account that as all parties, not just Republicans and Democrats, but even the minor parties, including our no-voter, no-party voters, so that they have a need to feel that they have a voice, a reason to inform themselves, and a reason to exercise their right to vote on a consistent basis, which we do not have in this county. Making a decision to do this after the primary in an off-election year with so much apathy is disingenuous to the voters in this county. As a teacher, I've learned that it is my responsibility to sell my stuff in a way that gets my peeps, my people, and my classes geared up to positively participate in the process. It is your job as well. Have you done that? I think not at this point. Point four, my representative in Congress has to run every two years. If we polled the more than 400 and so members of our House of Representatives, I'm sure we would hear all 400-plus of them enumerate for us why it should change. We have only to look at our Constitution to learn why the two-year term stands firm after all these years. Mr. Wilber was quoted in the paper as saying, "Well, let the people decide." Well, let's do that. I agree with him. Let's work hard to thoughtfully get our ducks all lined up after the presidential election next year. Let's not perseverate on it taking a long time to come up to speed, as Mr. Weatherup is concerned. Instead, let's work diligently to encourage our friends and neighbors, especially our younger generation, to consider service in this branch of government, to prepare to take their place, the place of many long-term legislators in the future. Let's give the ideas both major parties agree may be necessary in the future the time that it takes to prepare to inform our voters, to make an informed decision that's best for all of us in the long run. Let's concentrate on improving the number of voters in the next several years to register, inform themselves, and vote. It's your job to connect with your constituents, to make those contacts, and to fire up the vote so that it is reflected in the full community of voters instead of the very few that you are going to get out to the polls to vote this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Patty Fambolo. So if you could, you can state your name.
Sure.
And also, there is a timer there.
Okay. Great. Tough to follow an act from a legendary teacher like Kathy Mantaro, but I'm going to try. Hi, my name is Patty Fambolo, and I live in the town of Oswego. I would like to thank our elected officials, department heads, and county employees for the important work that they do and the services that they provide to residents. Our local government is essential to our well-being, and I appreciate this opportunity to share my comments to you and to salute the hard work of our county employees, department heads, elected officials, who strive every day to do more with less on our behalf. Let me tell you why I am interested in this particular local law. In the past few years, I have become more and more interested in our electoral process and the ability of voters to access and participate in our elections. Did you know that in 2018, voter turnout in New York State ranked near the bottom in the country, 42 out of 50 states, and that this has been the case for the last several decades, so it's not new? Did you know that in Oswego County, voter turnout routinely hovers during a presidential election, if we're lucky, around 50 percent, and it's much less in off-years? Did you know that based on figures from the 2010 census, there are approximately 24,000 people in our county 18 and over who are not registered to vote? And consequently, they are not included in these already dismal voter turnout statistics. In trying to understand the proposed local law, I contacted legislators on both sides of the aisle and people in the Board of Elections. I want to thank legislators Holtz, Wilber, Pathia, Drum, and Commissioner Brasek for answering my questions and providing information to me. Legislators Holtz and Wilber, who support the proposal, cited election law changes that now require candidate petitions to be collected in the winter months rather than in the spring, and that the two-year terms go by so quickly they feel that they are constantly campaigning. I would like to point out, however, that 22 Republican legislators will run unopposed in the upcoming election, as will two Democratic legislators run unopposed. We have only one legislative race of a choice. Legislators Pathia and Drum, who oppose the proposed, cited disadvantages to the local law as changing the term in the middle of the election cycle rather than phasing the change in for the 2020 elections. They view the term change as a way for the Republicans to solidify their already overwhelming majority. The Democrats, who are in the minority, cannot introduce legislation, which I found surprising as a voter and a taxpayer. In researching this issue, I discovered that Keogh County is planning a term of office change, but they're going to phase it in, and that Anadaka County continues to have two-year terms. As a constituent, I personally oppose the change from two to four years. I'm concerned about the reasons for our county's low voter turnout. Why do our voters feel disengaged? Are you, as elected officials, in touch with your constituents? Are you doing your best to hear the voices of those in your districts who are marginalized, disengaged, and feel their vote doesn't matter? I realize it is a tall border, and that we must work together to improve voter access. I have been working with a group locally who promote voter registration at the Oswego Farmer's Market, and they are there tonight as we speak, and they're there every Thursday night. They also assist voters with registration forms, and they're trying to educate people about the changes to the election law, which now provides for early voting and other expanded rights for our voters. I'm concerned that less legislator interaction with constituents is the wrong direction at a time when we need everyone to be working together to turn out the vote. I would like to encourage all county officials to work towards improved voter turnout, to work across the aisle, and to also take meaningful measures to safeguard our elections. And finally, I urge you to withdraw the proposed Local Law Number Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Prosser. Thank you. The podium is yours. Please state your name, and just a pleasant reminder that in five minutes.
Gordon Prosser, Town of Hannibal. I would like to thank everyone for offering this opportunity to speak. I do not want to try and repeat the excellent comments that have already been made to this point, but I would like to know where there are cost savings in going to a four-year term. There's going to be an election regardless, so the only cost savings that I can see are to the legislators and what little bit we would save in the ink for that race on the ballot. I do realize that the Minority Caucus years ago put this forward as a part of a proposal that would benefit the voters in Oswego County, but this was only one part of that proposal. The proposal at that time included the formation of an elected county executive that would be answered to the voters and not to the majority party, term limits, which I do not hear anything going as far as term limits in this proposal. The other things that were discussed at that time was, excuse me, a series of proposals that would benefit the voters in Oswego County. I would like to reiterate, I would really appreciate to know where the cost savings are going to come from this proposal. I do know, having helped carry petitions myself, that this offers not only the candidate, but the members of the party that are carrying petitions to meet the voters. And I would like to remind everyone sitting in this room, your job is to represent the voters, and carrying petitions regardless of the weather, that affects me also when I carry petitions, offers me and yourself an opportunity to meet new voters and to find out what their issues really are. I can tell you that Oswego County is one of the poorest counties in the area. We also proposed a reduction in the number of legislators as a part of that package. We have one of the highest numbers of legislators in this entire northern New York State. So I think there's lots of opportunities to put this part that really isn't going to save much money into a proposal that would really benefit the voters themselves. Thank you. I do appreciate this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Dennis Merlino. Yes, sir. The podium is yours. Five minutes.
Hi, Dennis Merlino, City of Fulton. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. These proposals to increase the number of years in office for a legislator, I see as nothing as more than the legislators taking shortcuts and giving themselves raises. They're automatically giving themselves four years of pay rather than two years of They're without any benefit whatsoever to the public. You are taking away opportunity for the public to meet candidates and have a say before There would be no recourse by the public should the legislators make decisions that the public opposes. They would have to wait four years to do anything about what you do up here. You can vote yourselves raises. The public can't do anything about it for four years. You can vote to increase your own benefits, or you've already voted to not reduce your benefits. What's going to stop you from increasing your own benefits? The public will no longer have a say until four years from now. You could vote gun control legislation in to take people's guns away. You can do this, and the public would have no recourse for four years. You could vote to raise taxes on the members of the public, and they could do nothing about it for four years. You could vote to cut the services to the public, and they couldn't do anything about it for four years. Whatever you decide to do, the public would just have to take it without any say for four more years. And I find these possibilities despicable to even consider. Thank you.
Thank you. James Bass. Thank you, sir. The podium is yours. Five minutes and state your name, please.
My name is James Bass of Town of Grandy, 60 Best Drive, Fulton, New York. I first want to take and say this is the first time in my life since I've sat on one of the chairs. So you will understand my remarks, but not in any disrespect to the work you people do, the effort you have to put in, the sacrifice you have to make to put the time in. That being said, the fact that you want to move to a four-year term brought my light straight to the paper, because I have had the opportunity to run two-year terms many times. And the only people that I really thought that should have four-year terms was the highway superintendent, and he won his election there one day, and he started campaigning the next day, making sure you got elected four years from that. But that being one thing that comes up. But more important is, when you go out and you see people to get your petition signed, if you have an organization, you can have that done by three people. Get the number you've got to have. I have 15 people to every petition, and you only have to see a few people. I had the privilege of working hard to get my petition signed and meet people. I was told straight on what they thought about me, and I accepted it and hoped they'd voted for it. The big problem I have with this process here is the primary has already been done for this year. So that means whoever is running in the fall, November, secures a four-year term immediately. If this were the public thing before the primary, there might be more discussion. Maybe somebody else might be into the process. I'm not sure. But I just think that we're getting further and further away from communication with people personally. Everybody's doing it by the social media, they use Facebook or whatever, and they make good contact with people that way. But the real contact is handshake, talk to people, see what's going on, take your beating when you go out and meet them, and see if you do get the recovery of that meeting with having a vote. So that being said, again, I appreciate what you can do. I just oppose the concept of a four-year term as a necessity. Thank you.
Hard to read. Might be Frank Castillo? Thank you, Mr. Castillo. You have five minutes. The podium is yours. Please state your name.
I'm contestant. Frank Castillo, City of Fulton, taxpayer for the past 50 years. I have a few things to read here. A good friend of mine sent me an email. Mr. Greenlee, some of you may know, he's not in favor of the four-year term, he's in favor of the two-year term. He has said that I may read this. It says, "Here is your response. You may read this in the meeting on the 25th. In response to the idea of the proposed legislation and a four-year term, first, when your petitions were carried and signed, it was a two-year, not four-year. Now to push for four years is deceitful to the general public. If the public should pass this in November, then it is my opinion it shouldn't go into effect until the following cycle of elections. Several reasons are: Our state representatives must seek election on a two-year cycle, and if you are doing a good job, you will be elected anyway, but if not, you're going to be going two, not four. I hope this email, my friend, is read at the public hearing, and I am unable to attend." Some of you may know I've asked for some opinions on some voting. And just some comments. I got four years, but not starting this year. Four years, two years is never enough. Four years, I have always felt four-year term gives the elected person a fair chance to meet their goals. I would prefer term limits set to at least no more than three, four-year terms. Four years. Two years of term limits. I'm not going to read them all, but I'm going to read enough of them. If two years of a person is following through on their commitments and actually listening to the public, then they will get voted in for another two years. Need limits on how many terms? I'm kind of cool on two-year terms. I believe it keeps the elected on their toes. Most of us can still remember what happens over a two-year period. Two years. I had to learn many jobs in two weeks. If they can't learn in two years, get out and save the voters the agony of watching them do nothing for another two years. Now, I have 16 people who said two-year terms, 10 people said four-year terms, but with the four-year terms, they've set term limits. Okay? Now for myself. Everybody remembers the movie League of Their Own. Most famous line is, "Crying. Are you crying? There's no crying in baseball." Well, I say, "Are you whining?" There is no whining in the legislature. That is all we've heard and read about for the past month or so. Pale times, July 2nd. Two-term limits don't provide enough time for incoming lawmakers to fully grasp the inner workings of county government before facing another election. The state recently adopted election laws forcing legislators seeking reelection to start their campaigning roughly 13 months after taking office. Governments and Courts Committee meeting, July 1st. New election law is a hardship on the candidates. Two years isn't enough time. If you're not educated enough to speed, you just rubber-stamp stuff one way or another. It's your Democratic governor that caused this. To make a better-educated legislature, this is the way to go. A new legislator has a lot to learn. Pale times, July 7, 16. It pretty much took about four years to really have a handle on all the mechanisms of the Oswego County government and be as effective as possible. Pale times today. Term extensions has been discussed off and on for years and years. Term extensions has been discussed off and on for years and years, noting the latest call for it was born from Democrats asking for change. They reduced the cycle to 13 months, so that's actually how it came to be. The change in election law forced legislators to start seeking office in February, just 13 months after taking their terms. Adding Republicans brought the measure forward directly as a result of the changes handed down from the state. Addition to the changes in the election law, the county undertakes many projects and ventures that take years to see through to completion. Four-year terms would allow individuals to finish more of the work they start. A lot of projects are in depth and take time. Okay. Sorry, but did the election laws, were they only changed for our state government? Our state government, okay? Not by Democrat government? Only affect Oswego County legislative body? I don't think so. There are 18 other counties that have only two-year terms, and they haven't changed to four-year terms and don't plan to. We know there are no additional costs for elections on a two-year term. A true elected official never stops campaigning. If he is doing his job correctly, he is campaigning every day, going out and getting signatures. Every election season should not be a hardship, it should be considered an honor. If these new election laws are too much for anyone to handle, then I suggest you step down, let someone else take the seat that knows what it will take to hold the seat and do the job. Stop the whining in the legislature. There is no whining in the legislature. Just do your job.
Mary Vanous, can I pronounce that? Sorry. Again, the podium is yours. You have five minutes. You can state your name.
Good evening, legislators and citizens. I'm Mary Vanous. I'm from Washington Boulevard in Oswego, New York. The proposal to change the term of office for the county legislature seems to me that legislators are asking for a time to get away from their constituents, to give themselves a break so that they don't have to be answerable to their citizens. I think that one should reconsider this. It's very important to keep open communications with all of your constituents. Know what they're thinking. The two-year term makes you go out and get your signatures and talk with your constituents and really get the pulse of your community. To change it to four years would just put people on their back bench, resting on their laurels for a year or two between elections. And that may not be true of everyone, but there will be those legislators who will just take it easy. And the work of government is just too important. And I think the, what some of our earlier speakers were talking about, the numbers of people in our county who don't vote is really something that we should be ashamed of, because if you, as a legislator, are really doing your job, you're getting as many people out there to vote for you as possible. By making this a four-year term, you're not going to have to go out as often. I also take issue with the secret determination in this proposed local law, number two of 2019. According to the secret, you state that this constitutes a routine or continuing agency, administration, and management, not including new programs or major reordering of priorities that may affect the environment. I think this change of term after the primary does indeed change the way that our government works. And if you want to pass this local law and go for the referendum, I think it has to be effective after this term and this next election. Thanks very much.
Is there any other people wishing to speak regarding this local law that have not signed the sign-in sheet?
Mr. Chairman, I'd request no other people wishing to speak. Public hearing goes at 7:36.
At this point, I'd like to call our regular, it's a special meeting with the legislator in session with the clerk.
Carter Kessler.
Here.
Wilford Potter.
Here.
Edward Gilson.
Here.
David Holtz.
Here.
Roy Rehill is absent, excused.
John Martino.
Here.
Bradley Trudell.
Here.
Paul House.
Here.
James Wetherup.
Here.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
Here.
Linda Lockwood.
Here.
Richard Klein.
Present.
Patrick Twist.
Here.
Stephen Wolpel.
Wouldn't miss it.
Nathan Emmons.
Here.
Thomas Drum.
Here.
James Rovell is absent, excused.
Heather Del Conte.
Here.
Tim Stoll.
Here.
Terry Wilber.
Here.
James Crossick.
Here.
Morse Sorbella.
Here.
Daniel Fafia.
Here.
Frank Castillo.
Wouldn't miss it. Thank you. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution adopted in County Oswego Local Law Number Two of 2019 entitled, "The Local Law Increasing the Term of Office for County Legislators from a Two-Year Term of Office to a Four-Year Term of Office."
Yes, as far as my constituents go, I heard no one and a negative [inaudible]. No one else has called me for my interest in addressing any of them. People have a chance to voice their opinion.
Any discussion?
I didn't hear a second. I always ask that question.
Anyway, any discussion? Legislature shot.
I would like to offer an amendment that includes a term limit, two terms. If the intent of the legislature is truly to increase efficiency and professionalism, now is the time to prove it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Second amendment.
Second amendment. Okay, here we go. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely. Roll call on the amendment.
Carter.
If we have discussion, then just nobody wants to discuss that?
He asked for a discussion.
He asked for a discussion. Nobody wants to discuss something. Roll call, sir.
Carter Kessler.
No.
Wilford Potter.
No.
Edward Gilson.
No.
David Holtz.
No.
Roy Rehill is absent, excused.
John Martino.
No.
Bradley Trudell.
No.
Paul House.
No.
James Wetherup.
No.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
No.
Linda Lockwood.
No.
Richard Klein.
No.
Patrick Twist.
No.
Stephen Wolpel.
No.
Nathan Emmons.
No.
Thomas Drum.
Yes.
James Rovell is excused.
Heather Del Conte.
Yes.
Breeshad.
Yes.
Tim Stoll.
No.
Terry Wilber.
No.
James Crossick.
No.
Morse Sorbella.
No.
Daniel Fafia.
Yes.
Frank Castillo.
Yes.
It's five in favor, eighteen opposed.
Okay, resolution failed. Any discussion on the original? Legislature Castillo.
Mr. Chairman and fellow legislators, I've heard an awful lot tonight. I've read an awful lot of papers about why we're going from a two-year to a four-year term, why we don't put it forward to the general public for their vote. Many of the reasonings behind the change is the fact that two years isn't long enough for me to learn my job. Two years isn't long enough, and a year and 13 months I have to start campaigning. But my problem is, is when you decide to apply for a job, the first thing you should do is research duties and tasks on the job. If you aren't ready, willing, and able to do the job, you don't apply for the job. If you win the election, it is your responsibility to fulfill all aspects of the job as Oswego County legislator. They entail not just rubber stamping things, but researching any and all spending of taxpayer money. If you fail to do so, then you have not done your job. If you so choose to seek reelection, it means gaining enough signatures to be on the ballot and campaigning for the vote. It's part of the job. Do it and get out. If these tasks are too much, the taxpayers, the taxpayers should not enable you by giving you four years to figure out the job. No other jobs gives an employee a four-year training period at full pay. Government does not have an apprenticeship program. The county does offer a fully paid training program available to all legislators. If you choose not to take advantage of this, it's your own fault. I took it. It took me nine months to receive my diploma. At the same time, I held on a job and still fully functional as a legislator and accomplished a successful reelection campaign. It only took me two meetings to figure out county government works. You have department heads that are paid very well, and you need not know their departments inside and out. Our task is to protect the taxpayers' money and ensure it is spent on services. Our job is to research every item brought in front of us. It doesn't take two years to know how to do that. It takes four years. If it takes four years, you should pay back when you were paid.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's play the drum.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on the record about, pretty frequently about, you know, my gratefulness. And for me, to reiterate, it comes back to timing. The four-year term is something that has been brought up before by the minority caucus, and the timing just wasn't right then. I've said it to several of my colleagues on the other side of the aisle. I think this conversation could be had. I think there's support on this side of the aisle for a four-year term amongst legislators. But to do it in a post-primary setting in the middle of the summer, it's crazy. It's crazy. A couple of things I want to clear up for the record here, is we've gone round and round in circles about this really for the last month. First thing is the change to the election laws. Election laws just don't affect Republicans. They affect Democrats, too. On the same time as you guys, on the same doors and the same goal. It's a universal passage. So to argue that it's gold doesn't really, doesn't fly with me, because Democrats are out on the same time as you. The last month, we've heard, "Government is slow. Government's slow. These things are slow." It's almost laughable to me. The makeup of this body and how this body functions, whether it's number of legislators, whether it's things like four-year terms, whether it's term limits, the legislature decides those structural changes. Some of them have to go to vote like we're talking about tonight. You hold the keys to the car. Government moves at your pace. You're the majority party. And sometimes you move slow, and sometimes, I don't believe in coincidences, it moves particularly fast. So for me, let's not try to get bailed out with this slow government. You guys run government. Majority party runs government. You know, I've gotten beat up a little bit, or engaged in some back and forth about, you know, I've harped on timing, and others have said, "Well, if you were forward, if you were forward once and you're not forward now, then you're the one playing politics." It's making our arguments. It's making our argument. Why were you against this at one point, and now you're forward? We're walking in circles here. So for me, we've had members of the public come out tonight. There's a lot of confusion surrounding this. I've talked to a lot of people in my district. I know my fellow Democratic caucus has talked to a lot of people in the district. This is moving rather quickly with a lot of moving parts, and the timing just is making people uncomfortable. I said it at the beginning of this, I think you have partners that are willing to sit down at the table and talk about the structural change it needs, term limits being one of them. I know there's people wanting to come to the table, but to do this now, post-primary, members of the, you heard it tonight, members of the public who are still trying to wrap their heads around these moving parts, it's just not the right thing to do. And I just think that, you know, we can get to the table and have these conversations, and then might yield results that, specifically with the four-year terms, that we might agree on. So with that, I'd like to motion to table this resolution. I think there's a ton to be discussed. I think you heard from members of the public tonight that are still wrapping their heads around it. That's just a small sample size tonight. This is a big county. People don't know that's going on, so I'd like to make a motion to table, come back and have this conversation. It's not being done the right way. Thank you.
Second. Let's play the drum. Like a roll call on it, too, Mr. Chairman. Yes. Roll call.
We have discussion on the [inaudible].
Discussion?
Discussion on the [inaudible].
The motion to table is not debatable. So, have a resolution to table? Any discussion?
I think he just said he can't.
No, you can't. There's roll call, vote requests, and a motion to table. The motion to table is not debatable. Got you. All right. Roll call, sir.
Carter Kessler.
Is this a table or meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Wilford Potter.
No.
Edward Gilson.
No.
David Holtz.
No.
Roy Rehill is absent, excused.
John Martino.
No.
Bradley Trudell.
No.
Paul House.
No.
James Wetherup.
No.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
No.
Linda Lockwood.
No.
Richard Klein.
No.
Patrick Twist.
No.
Stephen Wolpel.
No.
Nathan Emmons.
No.
Thomas Drum.
Yes.
James Rovell is excused.
Yes.
Heather Del Conte.
Yes.
Breeshad.
Yes.
Tim Stoll.
No.
Terry Wilber.
No.
James Crossick.
No.
Morse Sorbella.
No.
Daniel Fafia.
Yes.
Frank Castillo.
Yes.
It's five in favor, eighteen opposed.
Okay, resolution failed. Any discussion on the original? Legislature Castillo.
Mr. Chairman and fellow legislators, I've heard an awful lot tonight. I've read an awful lot of papers about why we're going from a two-year to a four-year term, why we don't put it forward to the general public for their vote. Many of the reasonings behind the change is the fact that two years isn't long enough for me to learn my job. Two years isn't long enough, and a year and 13 months I have to start campaigning. But my problem is, is when you decide to apply for a job, the first thing you should do is research duties and tasks on the job. If you aren't ready, willing, and able to do the job, you don't apply for the job. If you win the election, it is your responsibility to fulfill all aspects of the job as Oswego County legislator. They entail not just rubber stamping things, but researching any and all spending of taxpayer money. If you fail to do so, then you have not done your job. If you so choose to seek reelection, it means gaining enough signatures to be on the ballot and campaigning for the vote. It's part of the job. Do it and get out. If these tasks are too much, the taxpayers, the taxpayers should not enable you by giving you four years to figure out the job. No other jobs gives an employee a four-year training period at full pay. Government does not have an apprenticeship program. The county does offer a fully paid training program available to all legislators. If you choose not to take advantage of this, it's your own fault. I took it. It took me nine months to receive my diploma. At the same time, I held on a job and still fully functional as a legislator and accomplished a successful reelection campaign. It only took me two meetings to figure out county government works. You have department heads that are paid very well, and you need not know their departments inside and out. Our task is to protect the taxpayers' money and ensure it is spent on services. Our job is to research every item brought in front of us. It doesn't take two years to know how to do that. If it takes four years, if it takes four years, you should pay back when you were paid.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on the record about, pretty frequently about, you know, my gratefulness. And for me, to reiterate, it comes back to timing. The four-year term is something that has been brought up before by the minority caucus, and the timing just wasn't right then. I've said it to several of my colleagues on the other side of the aisle. I think this conversation could be had. I think there's support on this side of the aisle for a four-year term amongst legislators. But to do it in a post-primary setting in the middle of the summer, it's crazy. It's crazy. A couple of things I want to clear up for the record here, is we've gone round and round in circles about this really for the last month. First thing is the change to the election laws. The election laws just don't affect Republicans. They affect Democrats, too. On the same time as you guys, on the same doors and the same goal. It's a universal passage. So to argue that it's gold doesn't really, doesn't fly with me, because Democrats are out on the same time as you. The last month, we've heard, "Government is slow. Government's slow. These things are slow." It's almost laughable to me. The makeup of this body and how this body functions, whether it's number of legislators, whether it's things like four-year terms, whether it's term limits, the legislature decides those structural changes. Some of them have to go to vote like we're talking about tonight. You hold the keys to the car. Government moves at your pace. You're the majority party.
Paul House.
No.
James Wetherup.
No.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
No.
Linda Lockwood.
No.
Richard Klein.
Yes.
Patrick Twist.
No.
Stephen Walpel.
No.
Nathan Emmons.
No.
Thomas Drum.
Yes.
Shane Robbwell is absent, excused.
Heather Delconte. Yes.
Breeshad.
Yes.
Tim Stoll.
No.
Terry Wilber.
No.
James Crossick.
No.
Morse Savela.
No.
Daniel Pfeiffer.
Yes.
Frank Castillo.
Yes.
Richard Klein.
No.
Five in favor, eighteen opposed.
Back to the original motion, let's play the Trump.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be voting in favor of the resolution, and I'll begin with, I'll try to be upfront here, give your takeaway right away, which is that we are representative of the body. This is about a referendum. The referendum goes out, it's truly democratic. It goes out and everybody votes, and that's what democracy is, when everybody votes. A republic is when representative votes, that's our takeaway of the night. But I do want to just make a couple other comments, and just to reiterate what I said at the fore at our previous legislative meeting, voting on representatives in democracy, this is an opportunity to encourage direct participation. I greatly, gravely appreciate that we had seven speakers here tonight from the public, seven speakers from the public, that's tremendous. I would like to mention though, and I think it's an important clarification, that very often a vocal minority can accomplish what a silent majority doesn't through their own ability. And again, I want to encourage people to show up at these meetings. Every month, we have a legislative meeting. Every month, the entire public is invited, encouraged, and welcome to attend our legislative meetings. We rarely see that level of participation. Again, I'll reiterate what I just said a moment ago, a vocal minority can sometimes accomplish what a silent majority will not. But everyone will have the opportunity, every registered legal voter, not unregistered voters, I'm not sure what that is, but I heard that happen tonight, legal registered voter in this county will have an opportunity to make their own decision that will determine how long you sat in these chambers, our term limits will be. As for myself and how in my constituency, I've talked to a number, I've not encountered a single person outside of these chambers that is passionately against this resolution. I've had several discussions, most of them see it as a reasonable and sensible course of action. And I want to ask, how is it that we incentivize, that we can incentivize participation in our democracy, incentivize participation by both candidates and voters? And I don't have an answer for that to allow you. But again, as I stated to begin with, I'll be voting in favor of this resolution. I think one incentive for candidates is to know that they have a period of time that they'll be able to hopefully make a positive difference, and hopefully be able to turn to the fact that they'll be working on issues and working with their constituents and working to do the will of the people. Without them, constantly campaigning, constantly be out there. Last comment, I shouldn't say last comment, but there's a big difference in campaigning in the wintertime, going door to door here in the city of Oswego or the city of Fulton, and driving around for hours and many, many miles in Boyleston and Redfield, or even my district in Mexico, a big, big difference in that. So our timing here, again, we're going to turn this over to the people on November fifth this year, and let our entire constituency decide individually, person for person, how they want this to go, they want to participate, and what on the public they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislator Trump.
Just to clarify then, I guess what I'm hearing is, I asked, at the last meeting, I asked for clarification on the timing. Today I'm hearing that the answer to my question is, the timing is this because we do not want to go back petitioning in two years. If it's either the chairman or the sponsor of this resolution could answer that question for me, I would truly appreciate it.
Legislator Trump.
I'll answer that as best I can, I think. And I don't believe it's that we, not that we don't want to go petition, that is the process, that is how we get elected, that is how we get out there, that is how we do meet our constituents, that is one methodology for meeting our constituents. That's not the timing this year, I don't believe. I thought that the question was, why are we bringing it up now? If we have to go out every thirteen months, which is basically what it comes out during the wintertime in order to do the petitions, it will help, as one of our speakers said earlier, it will help the candidates to go out and not have to do that every thirteen months rather than through a four-year cycle. That will be a help for the candidates, but they still, I believe, will be in touch with the constituencies. I don't know if that hopefully.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislator Trump.
I'm really not satisfied with the answer because there's only, I think, one or two people that even have to campaign this year. So, again, it seems to me that if I'm principal, the four-year term is something everyone's comfortable with, or the majority is comfortable with, I'm still questioning the timing, why that can't wait till next election cycle? I'm hearing that the reason we can't is because nobody wants to go out in the winter and petition. I need to know if that is affirmative. And if not, what is the counterargument? Because I don't have anything, I haven't seen any information of the contrary.
Legislator Trump.
That is true. I'm sure there's other examples out there, but I'm going to repeat what I said at the last meeting when we were talking about this, is that two decades ago, the city of Fulton decided to change their term of office of mayor from two years to four years. The referendum was in ninety-eight, and the election was in ninety-nine. That is the logical course of action to take, and this body really should be following their example. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Legislator Trump.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a note that's particularly frustrating to me. First off, there's an opportunity to run for these offices. I'm not envious of some of our local legislators, I understand the mileage that has to go in those cars from house to house, I get that, running for office is a choice, that's as simple as it is for me to run or not. Secondly, in my opinion, I find it extremely, extremely difficult to hear about public accessibility and how we need more of this and less of this, and this legislative body continues cold meetings at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. You can't have it both ways. You can't, you can't talk out of both sides of your mouth, to talk about inclusion.
Excuse me, sir, what time?
I understand, Mr. Chairman, I understand, but you can't talk both sides. If you want to talk about inclusiveness, then let's do inclusiveness, but don't lecture about that and continue to have meetings in the middle of the afternoon. That's it.
Thank you. Any other legislature?
First of all, I want to say at seven o'clock on the first night of hard fest, just going there. But the other thing, I didn't get my answer. I asked for an answer from either the chairman or the sponsor of the resolution as to why the timing is so urgent. And if I don't get an answer, then the only assumption I have is because you do not want to go out and petition in March, in two years, because there is no other explanation I've given.
Legislator Castillo.
Yeah, three things now. Because legislator Delconte's question wasn't properly answered or to a satisfactory answer, I feel that anybody that is sponsoring the bill can't sponsor the bill, that they're not really straightforward with. We've heard comments that this is not political, this is something that we just put forward, not political, argued it up and down. Well, if you look and follow the timeline, the timeline is, the reasoning for this resolution and for this referendum has changed four different times. And any good detective will tell you, if you keep asking the same question to a person that's in front of you that you want to know the answer to, if they change their answer four times, sooner or later you get to the correct answer. So far, we haven't gotten to that correct answer. Now, doing my due diligence, I called the counties that are in NICE Act. I contacted the most important ones, which is our contiguous counties. And I found out that some have two-year terms, four out of five have two-year terms. The fifth one, Cayo County, is working on a fourth-year term, but they're looking at term limits. Now, we all along keep saying, well, we want to be like our contiguous counties, we want to do this like, you know, the elderly, on a dog a count, one night a count. But here we are, we're going to go to four-year terms. We're looking to get the public to accept us as a four-year term. And what I'm saying is, is that it's truly political minded, and that's where you're going with it, okay?
Thank you. Legislator, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for being recognized. There's a lot of, a lot of good discussion, and I'd like to touch on a few of them. Timing, if there's opposition, there's never going to be a good timing. This has been, my understanding has been discussed for years and years and years. So, let's draw a line, you've drawn a line, let's act on that line. I think a point that's been missed also is, when you run for this position, four years, two years, four years, you're making a commitment for those four years. It's a personal commitment that this person, this legislator is going to make as well. And I take it very seriously to be committed for those four years and to my constituents. And I think this is a good example of government moving a little bit faster for a change. I'm welcome.
All right, thank you. Any other legislature?
I just wanted to respond to those comments. When every single person who took their petitions and walked them this year made the commitment to run two years later, or maybe not run two years later, but your commitment was to two years when you took those petitions this year, that was the commitment, because that was all your commission had, that was the commitment that was made. So, so that was the commitment. So now to change it, after all that had taken place, makes no sense whatsoever.
Any other discussion? Legislator Castillo.
Mr. Chairman and general public and fellow legislators, I just want you to know that although members of the minority caucus may vote no on this resolution, we are not voting no on the public hearing, and we're not voting no on the referendum. What we're voting no on is the language that's in the referendum. We have asked for term limits to be added, we've asked for number of legislators to be decreased, and that's not in the language. So when we vote no tonight, any of us, we're voting no to the language that's in the referendum. We're not voting no that we don't want the public's input, we want to hear from the public. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Carry. At this point, Minister Turk.
Yes, I'd like to request that the legislature consider going to executive session for two items under Rule 15 of your rules, section six, matters leading to the appointment, deployment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of particular person of corporation, and on the second issue under section eight, proposed acquisition, sale, lease, real property.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, and then thank the administrator presenting it for me.
Second by. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.